Good evening. My name is Kathleen Brown, Chair of the Virginia Beach School Board, and I call this meeting to order on the 25th day, March 2025 at 6:00 PM. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Present in the School Board Chamber are Chair Brown, Vice Chair Weems, Mr. Bowen Steele, Mr. Callen, Mr. Culpepper, Mr. Cummings, Ms. Dwyer, Dr. Green, Ms. Melnick, and Ms. Rogers.
Thank you. And Ms. Felton won't be here today due to the passing of her husband Winfred. And in honor of Ms. Felton, we're going to observe our moment of silence for their family and her late husband. Please join me in a moment. Silence is your apple. Okay, we are going to have the Pledge of Allegiance followed by the National Anthem sung by the Great Neck Middle School Chorus, led by Chorus Director Ms. Luanne Mead, following the pledge. Thank you. I think that gave us all goosebumps. That was so beautiful. Thank you. Wonderful. All right, now to our most favorite part of the meeting, and that's our chance to recognize our outstanding students tonight. Dr. Green?
Our first recognition this evening is for the Virginia High School League Class V State Champion Gymnastics Team. Please welcome the Kellum Knights. After taking second place at the regional meet, members of the Kellum Gymnastic Team really locked in at practice and made all the right changes to their routines. They qualified six individuals to the state meet, including the regional all-around champion. The girls practiced hard every day, came together as a team, and really pushed each other to the best they could be. With ten underclassmen on the team and only two seniors, the girls needed the runner-up finish at regionals to motivate them and show them they could win the state title. Even though the competition was fierce and they were the underdog, the team had its best meet of the season. They won the state championship with a team-high score of 147.75. This score was 1.45 higher than the second team. The state gymnasts are Charlie Bosher, Cholo Boyce, Alana Dobraz, Maya Gar, Rebecca Garza, Helly Grab, Avery Hanlon, Lena Hartle, Arden Morano, Jalea Taglegnow, Harper Webster, Claire Welch, Harper Willett, Adeline Williams, and Charlie Wiles. The coaches are Mary Ann Parker and Alana Parker. Congratulations, Kellum Knights Gymnastics Team.
Our next recognition is for the VHSL Class V Individual Gymnastics State Champion in Vault. Please give a warm welcome to Violet Claunch from Kempsville High School. On March 1st, Violet Claunch became the first Kempsville gymnast to win a state championship since 2000. Violet, a freshman in Kempsville's Entrepreneurship and Business Academy, began her state championship journey by winning the Region 5A Vault Championship. Violet used this momentum gained to propel herself to become the VHSL Division V State Champion in Vault. Congratulations, Violet. We're so proud of you.
Our next recognition is for state champions in indoor track. Please welcome student athletes from Bayside High School. Senior Helen Hardnett, Junior Brian Hardnett, Senior Andrew Savidon, and Sophomore Elijah Willoughby are state champions in the 4x200 meter relay. Despite running track together for less than a year, these young men have achieved remarkable feats that showcase the power of teamwork. Their remarkable time of completing the 4x200 meter relay in just over 1 minute 28 seconds surpasses the previous school track record. Each student brings something unique to the team. Andrew is also the state champion in the 300 meter and the 500 meter. In fact, he is a national champion in the 500 meter dash. This fall... This fall, he will continue his academic and athletic journey at the University of South Carolina. Helen is one of the most outstanding athletes on the team, leading in total points scored. His versatility makes him an invaluable asset to the program. He will be attending Virginia Military Institute in the fall. Brian is having his best season as a Marlin and will be returning next year to lead the team to even greater success. Elijah is a rising star whose hard work and dedication set him apart. With his commitment to excellence, he is poised to become an outstanding sprinter and long jumper in the seasons ahead. Congratulations, Andrew, Helen, Brian, and Elijah. We are proud of you. Next, we'd like to recognize Virginia Teachers for Tomorrow, who recently won first-place prizes at the Educators Rising Virginia State Leadership Conference. Please welcome Aubrey Raquel, Leila Bryant, Irma Bailey, Alex Davis, and Chase Parker. Aubrey Raquel, a senior at Salem High School, earned first place for an oral presentation about non-core teaching careers. The presentation featured Mrs. Corbin Pinto, Choral Director at Salem's Visual and Performing Arts Academy. Students in this category were judged on their oral presentation skills, professionalism, use of mechanics, and overall depth of content and analysis. Inspired by Ms. Pinto, Aubrey is interested in pursuing a career in music education. Leila Bryant, a junior at Talwood High School, won first place for the children's literature. Leila wrote and illustrated a book for this fall as part of her Virginia Teachers for Tomorrow class. The book, titled "I Am Wonderfully Made Scribble," shares a positive message for preschoolers based on the idea that everyone is created equal and wonderfully made by God. At the competition, Leila read the book aloud in front of the judges. Irma Bailey, a senior at Cox High School, earned first place for her career and technical education lesson plan. Irma planned, prepared, and delivered her lesson on Bloom's Taxonomy to two Virginia Teachers for Tomorrow classes. In the fall, Irma will be attending William &amp; Mary as a Division 1 field hockey recruit and will pursue her teaching degree with an emphasis on school leadership. Alex Davis and Chase Parker are seniors at Cox High School. In their "Inside Our Schools" presentation, they were asked to showcase an innovative strategy that enhances teaching and learning. Alex and Chase presented the Teachers for Tomorrow project titled "A Day of Service." Working with the Hampton Roads Youth Volunteer Corps, Cox students organized a day of service in December that engaged 280 5th graders from three elementary schools and included over 15 projects. Congratulations. We are so proud of all of you.
Okay, that brings us to the adoption of the agenda. Are there any modifications to the agenda as presented? Seeing none, I did want to note that the PRC had Policy 331 on their 319 agenda and scheduled to be on April 8th meeting, so that one was moved because there was more modifications by staff. I call for a motion to approve the agenda as presented. Moved by Dr. Green, seconded by Ms. Rogers. Any discussion? Seeing none, I call for a vote to approve the agenda as presented.
So Madam Chair, we have 10 ayes. The motion did pass for the adoption of the agenda as presented.
Thank you. And we are now on to the Superintendent's Report and Recognitions. Dr. Robertson, we look forward to your report.
Good evening, Madam Chairwoman and members of the board. Here are a few items of interest for you on our families. Students and staff continue to show their support for Virginia Beach Police after the tragic loss of two officers last month. Officers Cameron Gervin and Christopher Reese worked for the 4th Precinct, which is near Kempsville High School. Kempsville and its feeder schools collected condolence cards and more than $1,700 for the officers' families. Students and staff wore blue on certain days and thanked school resource officers for their service. Our high schools are taking turns delivering food and other signs of appreciation to the precinct. At First Colonial High School's Legal Studies Academy, more than a dozen students stayed after school to assist the Virginia Beach Police Foundation. They helped prepare more than 400 thank-you letters to those who made financial contributions to the foundation in response to this tragedy. Police officers are an invaluable part of our school community. We will continue to support them as they ensure a safe learning environment for our students. More than 30 Virginia Beach High School students recently visited Old Dominion University for an inside look into the world of cybersecurity. ODU's Coastal Virginia Center for Cyber Innovation hosted its first-ever high school exposition on March 7th. Our students rotated between three breakout sessions presented by businesses and organizations that specialize in cybersecurity. They learned about malware, data breaches, and security measures. Students investigated whether their email accounts had ever been breached. One student found that a family member's email had been compromised more than 20 times. I'm thankful for ODU and its partners for helping our students explore this promising and important field of work. It's National Reading Month, and our schools are engaged in a variety of activities to support literacy. Luxford Elementary kicked off Reading Month with its annual vocabulary parade. Students wore placards with words like "Ladybug," "Bloom," and "Inquisitive" and wore outfits to demonstrate their vocabulary. Students and staff dressed up as their favorite storybook characters at Rosemont Elementary, Strawberry Elementary, and many of our other schools. At Salem Elementary, young readers dressed in their pajamas and cuddled up with a book for Flashlight Friday. Several schools invited authors to come and share how they come up with story ideas for their books. I personally read the 5th graders at Thalia Elementary School as one of my stops during National Reading Month. And I'd like to thank all of our community members who are visiting schools this month and board members who also read this month in sharing their love of reading. Finally, our students did a wonderful job representing the generosity of Virginia Beach by supporting Operation Smile during the recent Yingling Shamrock Marathon at the Oceanfront. Operation Smile Shamrock Final Mile participants run at school and at homes in the weeks before the marathon to accumulate 25.2 total miles. They run the final mile of their marathon on race day. They ask community members to donate to Operation Smile, a nonprofit that provides lifesaving facial surgeries to children in Hampton Roads and around the world. Before race day, J&amp;A Racing and its Starting Strides program facilitated shoe-fitting events in some of our schools. The cost of the shoes is covered by local organizations such as Running, etc., Orange Theory, Bags Buddies, and Murphy's Irish Pub. On race day, thousands of runners wore T-shirts designed by Allentown Elementary 3rd Grader Olivia Goddard, who won the event's T-shirt design contest. TKR recently aired a story about Allentown Elementary's efforts to support Operation Smile. Crease Elementary had the highest participation rate for our schools, and Allentown Elementary registered the most students while raising close to $2,000. Thank you to all the participants for showing how we can come together to support a worthy cause. Thank you, Madam Chair. This concludes my report.
Thank you. And do you have any recognitions tonight?
I do not have any recognitions.
Okay. We will move on to approval of the meeting minutes. There's two sets of meeting minutes for approval. First is going to be the March 4th, 2025 Special School Board Meeting. Is there any modifications to the March 4th, 2025 Special School Board Meeting Minutes as presented? Seeing none, I call for a motion to approve the March 4th, 2025 Meeting Minutes. Moved by Ms. Melnick, seconded by Ms. Rogers. Any discussion? Seeing none, I call for a vote to approve the March 4th Special School Board Meeting Minutes.
Madam Chair, we have 10 ayes, and the motion did pass for the approval of the minutes for March 4th, 2025.
Thank you. We are now on to the March 11th, 2025 Regular School Board Meeting Minutes. Are there any modifications to the March 11th Meeting Minutes as presented? Seeing none, I call for a motion to approve the March 11th, 2025 School Board Meeting Minutes as presented. Moved by Ms. Rogers, seconded by Mr. Cummings. Any discussion? Seeing none, I call for a vote to approve the March 11th, 2025 School Board Meeting Minutes.
So Madam Chair, we have 10 ayes. The motion did pass for the approval of the March 11th, 2025 Meeting Minutes.
Thank you. And we are now on to our public comment section. The School Board will now hear public comments on matters relevant to pre-K through 12 public education in Virginia Beach and the business of the School Board and the School Division from citizens and delegations who signed up with the School Board Clerk prior to noon today. The purpose for the public comment section is for the School Board to offer an orderly form to receive public comments during the School Board meeting. Finally, I call upon all speakers and all persons in the chambers to be civil in discussion and decorum. Whatever views you wish to express, the School Board wants to hear from you and to ensure that all viewpoints and perspectives are heard. The best way to do this is for all of us to strive for civility and respect. The School Board also invites the public to submit comments through email, which can be found on our website. Madam Clerk, please introduce the first speaker.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our first speaker will be Evangelina Offit.
Hello. Good afternoon. My name is Evangelina Offit. I'm a senior enrolled in the Global Studies and World Languages Academy at Talwood High School. First and foremost, I'd like to thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak in front of you today. I'm here speaking tonight as part of my senior project with my topic being sign language education. During the research phase of my project, I asked the question, "How can and why should education systems promote the teaching of sign language in developing countries?" My hope is that our school system outside of Ocean Lakes High School can begin to expand the elective American Sign Language. This will allow students from every school in the VB CPS district the opportunity to learn sign. Learning sign languages can open many doors. For example, it can create potential career opportunities. It can allow those in the hearing community to make stronger connections with those in the deaf community. And it can also prove to be a beneficial skill to have for future unforeseen circumstances. My own personal connection to sign languages is that I am a child of a deaf adult or a Coda. I have lived my life predominantly knowing sign. It has served as an almost second language to communicate with my mom. It's something that I cherish deeply. With this perspective, I've taken it and grown opportunities for others in the form of Talwood's American Sign Language Club. In this club, I teach about deaf culture and different signs students would otherwise not have learned but will benefit them in a future career or opportunity to communicate with a deaf person. And I find that students gladly take on the language and practice in stride. I've gathered data using a poll from students at Talwood and received several comments in agreement with the proposal of sign language as an elective class. Here I just hear responses I received. Quote one: "I've recently experienced hearing loss in one of my ears, and it had made me very curious about the experience of someone fully deaf. I think if I could learn sign language in school, it would open me up to unique perspectives." And quote two: "If sign language were introduced as an elective class, that would really help eliminate the barrier between everyone since sign language is a very universal language that anyone could learn. In conclusion, there are many students and staff in support of expanding opportunities to learn sign language. I've come here today to advocate and be the voice for those that desire this expansion. To make the value of sign language clear, I put in a request for an interpreter to be present tonight for my mom. I hope you, as well as the audience, will consider this an important topic to contemplate and for which to take action. Thank you for your time."
Our next speaker is Grace Curran.
Hello. Thank you for allowing me the time to speak tonight. My name is Grace Curran, and I'm a member of the Legal Studies Academy. I am here to address the issue of weighted points being awarded to all academy students rather than the courses being classified as electives. I'm aware that the School Board previously granted the Governor's School of Arts students the privilege of their courses having half of an AP course's weight represented in code 6.72-1. And I am here to request the same across the board for all Virginia Beach City Public School academies. This is not so much a matter of boosting a GPA or gaining an extra credit point, but a matter of what is equitable for all. As academy students, we apply to be part of an organization that will lift us up and give us the necessary resources to excel in our future endeavors. Our classes cater to our interests and push us to think outside the box of conventional learning. The necessity for knowledge has no reward. We are rewarded with sleepless nights, stressing over tests, practicing speeches over and over until it's ingrained in our memory, and studying until we can't get it wrong. From our leaders and advocates, we ask for one-half of a weighted point for all academy classes. AP classes are given 0.0488 of extra credit points for receiving an A, and the percentage dwindles as the grade decreases. A Governor's School for the Arts student who has taken classes involving visual arts, dance, and musical theater is no different than a Legal Studies Academy student taking classes like Mock Trial or Criminology; a Bayside Health and Sciences Academy student taking Medical Chemistry or Biomedical Technology; an Ocean Lakes Math and Science Academy student taking Molecular Biology or Multi-Variable Calculus; a Kellum Business Academy student taking EBA Accounting or EBA Incubator EDU; or a Talwood Global Studies Academy student taking Global Ecology or Global Citizenship Seminar. The only difference is that Governor's School for the Arts classes are rewarded with a bonus credit of 0.0122 for an A, 0.0092 for a B, 0.0061 for a C, and 0.0031 for a D. And other academy classes are considered electives on the standard grading scale. We ask not to receive extra credit, but to receive what is earned and what is granted to our co-part at the Governor's School for the Arts. My classmates and I work to represent Virginia Beach City Public Schools in the best light possible by showing up every day, ready to learn and improve. Now we ask you to show up for us. Thank you very much."
Our next speaker is Carter Babington.
Good evening. My name is Carter Babington. I'm a student in the Health Sciences Academy at Bayside High School. I am here to voice my concerns about the issues pertaining lockdowns. For anyone who may not know, last Wednesday, Bayside went on an internal lockdown from about 1:30 to 3:00 PM. After the internal lockdown announcement, my teacher guided us in securing windows, covering the door, and moving into the corner to hide. Police later entered the classroom with their guns drawn, ID'd everyone, searched bags, and patted us down. Safe to say, it wasn't the easiest day. While my teacher knew what to do in this scary situation, other students didn't have the same experience. Some had teachers who didn't understand the procedure of an internal lockdown or had subs who weren't equipped to handle an emergency like ours. Thankfully, everyone was safe, but I believe no student should have to experience what happened on Wednesday. While I don't think this lockdown could have been prevented, I think we could have been better prepared. I am here to voice my concerns about some of the training and preparation I believe needs to take place and improve before a lockdown. According to the official Virginia Beach School Board website, each school is required to conduct thirteen fire drills in a school year, but only four lockdown drills. Why are Virginia Beach schools required to have over three times the amount of fire drills when school shootings are a public health crisis? While I think it is important to always be prepared with drills, I think the amount of lockdown drills in a year needs to be increased. During a lockdown drill, teachers are given specific instructions to prepare students for an emergency. This ensures that both students and staff are equipped with the knowledge and skills necessary to respond effectively in crisis situations. Another concern I would like to voice is about the amount of training substitute teachers and staff receive. Substitute teachers receive little to no training about school emergency response planning, many times leaving it up to the students in an emergency. For example, last Wednesday during the lockdown at Bayside, there were a few subs and even teachers who let their students leave the classroom or tried to leave themselves when the dismissal bell rang when we were still on a lockdown. Other students felt like they had to educate the subs on what to do or how to progress. In my opinion, this should have not been left up to the students. And while no one could have planned for an internal lockdown to occur, more steps could have been taken to better prepare the subs. According to Virginia state law, all substitute teachers must attend an orientation about the school's policies and procedures. After speaking with some of the substitutes from our school, there's minimal to no training on these emergency procedures. I believe it should be a goal to intensify the training required to work in a school as a substitute teacher, so any unpreparedness can be avoided. Overall, I think V B Schools does a great job about being prepared for emergencies, and I completely understand that there is no perfect way to handle situations like these. I was very impressed, but, uh, I was very impressed with how the students and staff handled the lockdown on Wednesday at my school. My goal today is to advocate for myself and other students, so in the future we can be better prepared. Thank you.
Our next, our next speaker is Beatrice Duchette.
Hello. I am Beatrice Duchette from Creed's Elementary School, a concerned fifth grader. I spent a lot of my time at the, at the school library during my years at Creed's, and I'm concerned by the facts that a lot of books are being taken off of the shelves for being too, and for being deemed too inappropriate for small students to handle. Libraries are places that are meant to share knowledge. With adults limiting the books that children are allowed to read, they're also limiting the amount of knowledge shared. Though fiction books may not be true, they teach morals through brave heroes and compassionate protagonists. Nonfiction books teach us about past events, history, and facts. We can't learn from our mistakes without knowing what they were. The school board policies have taken many books off the shelves of the Creed's Library, and many of the books taken are favorites of mine and others. I get that guardians of the school board wish to protect their children from scary stuff. But the facts are, there's so much scary stuff in the world and the things parents are doing, like letting their kids play games with guns and watching horror movies. It's really pointless. For some books, yeah, they are super inappropriate, but books like Across the Desert aren't inappropriate. Across the Desert may have a few parts about drugs, but it's about raising awareness about them and helping people struggling or having someone else struggling with them. Have you, have your kids actually been getting scared, or are you just uncomfortable with the ideas of these books? Face the facts. You're really the one who doesn't like them, not your kid. If you're having legitimate issues, talk to your kid. Tell them not to check it out. Remember that by taking out a book, you're taking access from all the students. Thank you for your time, and please remember, you can't sugarcoat the truth. Sooner or later, your kid's going to know about the struggles of life. Please consider reinstating books to the school libraries.
Madam Chair, that was our last student speaker. We'll move on to our citizen speakers. We have Tricia Abernathy. Um, speakers two and three had to cancel. Then it'll be Mindy Huff and then Heather Sype.
Hey, good evening. My name is Tricia Abernathy, and I'm the founder of Moms Night Out V B, a local organization dedicated to building a community through meaningful conversations and impactful events. I'm here tonight because as a mother and an advocate for our kids, I believe there's nothing more important than ensuring our schools are safe places where students can learn, grow, and thrive without being in fear. In just two nights, on March twenty-seventh at Smart Mouth Brewery, we're hosting a school safety and law enforcement training town hall in partnership with Community First Project. It's a nonprofit committed to enhancing law enforcement training to better serve and protect our communities. This is not just another discussion. It's an opportunity to learn directly from the experts who train law enforcement officers across the country in crisis response, de-escalation, school violence, prevention, and life-saving trauma care. The Community First Project was founded by veterans and Navy SEALs, Army Special Operations, individuals who have operated in high-stress environments and have translated their expertise into specialized training programs for law, law enforcement. Their work is about proactive solutions, ensuring officers have the skills, the tools, training necessary to respond effectively to threats in schools and beyond. I know school safety is an ongoing priority for this board and for the public school system as a whole. We've dedicated SROs who play a critical role in our schools, um, not just as protectors, but as mentors and trusted figures for students. We also have a robust security and emergency management protocol, um, it's in place. But the reality is that school safety is an evolving challenge, and the collaboration between parents, educators, law enforcement, and policymakers is essential. Um, that's why I'm inviting each of you, school board members, the administrators, teachers, parents, um, anyone who has kids that they love, to attend the event Thursday evening. Your presence wouldn't only show your commitment to the topic and this issue, um, it would allow for open dialogue in how we advocate for funding, for resources, and policies that further strengthen our school safety in both public and private settings. Um, this isn't about fear mongering. It's about preparedness. It's about equipping our officers and school leaders, as we just learned, aren't quite ready, um, with the best training and strategies to keep our kids safe. It's about ensuring that when crisis does inevitably happen, our response is swift, effective, and life-saving. So I ask, will you join us? Will y'all come and listen and engage and be part of the conversation? Um, it could shape the future of the school safety situation that we have in Virginia Beach Public Schools right now. Um, I truly believe that when we work together as a community, we can create safer schools and a stronger future for our kids. Um, thank you for your time, and I hope to see everyone there Thursday night for beer and pizza.
Our next speaker is Mindy Huff, then Heather Sype, then Cody Connor.
Thank you for this opportunity to come before you tonight. My concern is about removing the commemorative resolutions from the school board agendas. These resolutions serve as a meaningful way to recognize and celebrate the diverse cultural groups, educators, and professionals who contribute to the success of our schools. Now, according to V B C P S website, black students represent twenty-two point eight percent. Hispanic and Latino students represent fourteen point four percent. And multiracial, uh, students represent eleven point one percent. Upholding diversity, equity, and inclusion and accessibility is essential to fostering a welcoming and supportive learning environment for all. I urge you to continue to honor the individuals, groups, and achievements that shape this school's community. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Heather Sype, then Cody Connor, then Georgianne Allen.
Good evening, Chairwoman Brown, Vice Chair Weems, members of the school board, and Dr. Robertson. My name is Heather Sype, and I am the president of the Virginia Beach Education Association. Recently, the Norfolk Public Schools budget was passed, which includes raising their starting teacher salary to just over sixty thousand dollars a year. I want you to keep this in mind as you consider the options presented during workshop for how to use some of the projected additional state funding. I'm disappointed to see there is no consideration being given to address the step inequities on the unified scale for steps zero to fourteen. On the other hand, I am pleased to see the minimum recommendation for instructional staff as a total of four point five percent when the step is factored in, with the other recommendation totaling five percent. However, this still leaves the starting salary for teachers in Virginia Beach more than four thousand dollars below Norfolk's. Let's put this in perspective. In Norfolk, the average rent for a one-bedroom apartment is thirteen hundred dollars. With a sixty thousand dollar starting salary, that's less than the recommended thirty percent gross monthly income expenditure for rent. In Virginia Beach, the average, average rent for a one-bedroom apartment is fifteen hundred a month. Between the lower gross salary and increased rent, that puts a starting teacher in a deficit of approximately six hundred dollars a month or seven thousand two hundred dollars a year as compared to Norfolk. Virginia Beach needs to do better if it wants to attract qualified new teachers. Here's another interesting fact. When the cost of living adjustments and inflation are fact, factored in, the average Virginia teacher's salary for Virginia Beach is two hundred dollars a year below where it was in twenty fifteen. In a ten-year span, there have not been adequate raises to even level out the playing field for educators. And that doesn't account for increases in individual healthcare premiums, deductibles, and copays. Add in the increased workload demands all of us with ten-plus years of experience can attest to, and it is a dire situation indeed if the division plans on retaining highly qualified teachers. Stellar staff deserve a living wage. If you want the best, you have to compensate staff at a highly competitive level and show staff the professional respect they deserve. This division needs to prioritize the staff who are in contact with students from the moment they get on the bus or are dropped off at school in the mornings until they are moment, they are picked up or get off the bus at the end of the day. Our students are in contact with dozens to hundreds of staff members daily who work tirelessly to ensure they receive a world-class educational experience. Do what is right. Take care of our staff so they can focus on taking care of our students. On a side note, there have been multiple remarks throughout this budget process about the increased cost the division has to pay for healthcare, including claims that are filed. If you want some insight on ways to bring some of those costs down, I would love to have a conversation with you.
Our next, our next speaker is Cody Connor, then Georgianne Allen, then Georgia Allen.
You know, I, I used to be an avid gardener. And like any of my interests, I studied it intensely, uh, really became quite good at it. One of the things I learned is that society is a lot like a garden. And any good gardener will tell you that if you want a truly great garden, you need more than just fertile, fertile soil. There's other things that you have to do. You need to plant a wide variety of crops because diversity always increases your chances of success. You need to equitably distribute your resources. You need to make sure everything gets the right amount of light and water, nutrients, and space that it needs. And you need to include a whole lot of different things that you might not, uh, see as truly valuable at first, you know? Plants that you're not going to eat, beneficial bacterias and insects. Because a really good gardener understands that all these different organisms living together benefit from that. They boost each other's growth. They create a stronger system. And doing these things doesn't just provide your garden with everything it needs. It also prevents bad things from happening. When you remove the diversity, equity, and inclusion, a garden becomes more easily infested by pests, more susceptible to blight and rot. Your plants wither, they die. Your harvest is small and bitter. We once again had a horribly racist incident in our schools. And you will once again tell us that there is no place for racism and discrimination here. But it keeps finding a place. And if you want to know how, I suggest that you just look. Look at how our garden is being tended.
Our next speaker is Georgianne Allen, then Georgia Allen. Georgianne Allen? Georgia Allen?
For a minute, I thought I had a cousin in here somewhere. Didn't know about it. Good evening. Chair Person Brown, Vice Chair Weems, School Board Members, and School Board Superintendent Robertson. I am Georgia F. Allen, a lifetime resident of Virginia Beach and a product of the Virginia Beach school system, public school system. Let me try to see with these glasses. I broke them as I was coming in. Given the recent incident at Calum High School, which I am an alumni, it is even more important that we not only ensure that we publicly do the commemoration, commemorative resolutions, but we also look for ways to better educate all children on empathy, politeness, and humility. Since there are numerous changes that are taking place on a national level, our residents are looking for true leadership that they can have confidence in and that they can trust. I have noticed a recent suggestion to remove the commemorative resolutions from the school board agenda. I believe that it is important to support the commemorative resolutions as these resolutions elicit engagement from all facets of the community. I'm concerned, yet hopeful, that we can continue to implement the commemorative resolutions on our school board agenda. These resolutions help bring our community together while, while recognizing our collective achievements. Eliminating this recognition sends a harmful message that inclusion and representation are not valued in Virginia Beach schools. We believe that honoring diversity, equity, inclusion, and accessibility benefits everyone in our school community. This type of public recognition is important to show value and to foster a welcoming and supportive learning environment for everyone in the school community. We ask that you continue to publicly honor the important people, groups, and achievements in our school. And as you can see, I'm wearing my alumni T-shirt because I was disappointed in my school, Calum, Florida Calum High School. I urge you to vote against the removal of the public commemoration resolutions, and thank you for your consideration and support in preserving these important resolutions.
And Madam Chair, that was our last speaker for this evening.
Okay. Thank you. And I just want to take a quick moment to thank every single person that came out and took the time to speak today. And with that, we will move on to our interim financial statements, February twenty twenty-five. We welcome Danielle Hopkins, Director of Business Services.
Good evening, Chair Brown, Vice Chair Weems, School Board Members, Dr. Robertson. As of February twenty-eighth, the overall revenue trend remains acceptable at this point in the fiscal year. The General Assembly did adopt the direct aid budget. Uh, we are still waiting for the governor to approve the budget. I think you heard yesterday that, um, he has some other ideas. Um, but based on the latest, there were no changes from the original governor's budget. And we are, they are adding six point five million dollars for bonuses, which you guys have been talking about for a few weeks now. With the governor's previous increase of one point seven million dollars and the added bonus of six point five million dollars, the total increase to our budget would be eight point two million dollars. Again, this hasn't been fully approved yet, but I don't think they really change the current year budget too often. Federal revenues are showing an acceptable trend as of the end of February. We have received impact aid payments of approximately nine point eight million dollars year-to-date. Other sources of revenue through the month are acceptable at this point in the fiscal year. They are down about five hundred thousand dollars from the same time last year, mainly due to the stop-arm enforcement is down five hundred and sixty thousand. Uh, jewel settlements are down four hundred and sixty thousand, and we've received four hundred thousand dollars in rebates for propane buses. The next graph shows that the sales tax The next graph shows that the sales tax receipts are at an acceptable level. Year-to-date through February, we are approximately one point one million dollars higher than the same time last year. And the last graph shows expenditures and encumbrances trend continues to remain acceptable at this point in the fiscal year. At this point, I'll take any questions.
Okay. I don't see any questions at this time. So, thank you very much. And if anybody has any, I'm sure we can follow up via email to Dr. Robertson. We will now move on to our next presentation, Tri-Campus Planning, and we're going to welcome Melissa Ingram, Executive Director of Facility Services, and Dr. Melanie Hamblin, Senior Executive Director of Elementary Schools.
Hi. Good evening, Chairman, Chairwoman Brown, Vice Chair Williams, and Dr. Robertson, and School Board members. Melissa Ingram and I are here tonight to share recommendations for transitioning the tri-campus into a two-school campus and also to share cost considerations. I'm sorry. On the slide, you see the first two bullets indicate the purposes for this presentation that I already shared with you. The final bullet indicates the primary goal, which is to receive direction from you on next steps regarding the tri-campus. As stated on our last meeting together, we have two options regarding changing the tri-campus to a two-school model. Our first option and our preferred recommendation is that we have a two-pre-K-five school. This is recommended for its ability to provide stability, supporting students' social, emotional, and academic development. In this model, students benefit from long-term relationships with teachers, personalized support, and a cohesive curriculum that ensures smooth transitions between grades. The model encourages mentorship opportunities where older students guide younger ones, fostering social connection and school pride. It also simplifies the communication for parents with multiple children, enhancing parent-school relationships and strengthening the community. The pre-K-five structure allows for focused emotional and social growth with coordinated support services available to address early challenges. Teachers who build lasting relationships with families can work together to create personalized support plans. The strong academic foundation from pre-K promotes long-term success while fewer disruptions lead to consistent learning and growth. Staying in the same school cultivates a sense of pride and attachment, positively influencing behavior and school spirit, and creating lasting school traditions. Collaboration between teachers across grades improves instructional quality, ensuring aligned teaching methods and progressive skill development. This model promotes stability, stronger community ties, easier parent engagement, and better emotional, academic, and social growth. It also allows students to follow a traditional educational model with transitions only between school levels such as elementary, middle, and high school, which is crucial for young students. In conclusion, the pre-K-five structure provides a supportive, consistent environment that benefits both students and the wider school community. An alternative option is to create two separate campuses, one for pre-K through first grade and another for second through fifth grade. The pre-K-one school would focus on foundational skills like reading, math, and social development in a nurturing and individualized environment, easing the transition to school and reducing anxiety for young learners. The second through fifth grade school would help bridge the gap between early elementary years and the more structured academic expectations of fourth and fifth grade. It provides tailored academic and emotional support with teachers tracking individual student growth. By having second grade with the third grade through fifth graders, teachers can better bridge the gap between tested and non-tested grade levels and assured vertical alignment of expectation. While this is a second choice, it is an alternative to two pre-K-five schools if needed for budgetary reasons. This would be the recommendation if that for only that purpose. I'm going to now turn it over to Mrs. Ingram to share with you some cost considerations.
Thank you, Dr. Hamblin, and good evening. I'm Melissa Ingram, Executive Director of Facility Services. And after reviewing options that Dr. Hamblin and Dr. Calucci's team have put together for the educational model, our Facility Services team has estimated that both educational models are estimated to be cost-neutral from a CIP perspective. With existing buildings, Diamond Springs Elementary and Newtown Elementary School having been designed to be able to accommodate all elementary school grade levels being considered. No significant changes would be required in order to satisfy either option to the existing school buildings, whether they be two pre-K to five schools or a pre-K to one school and grade two to five school. With the same number of students needing to be supported with either option, the main difference is not how much space may be needed, but where that space may be needed, again, making it cost-neutral. The cost for additional space is estimated to be twenty-five million dollars or less as programmed in the proposed fiscal year twenty-six CIP. Looking at projections and residing student population, it is currently estimated that the two buildings would need to support roughly twelve eighty to thirteen twenty students. And this is the best available data that we have now, but of course, more work would need to be done after an educational model is chosen. So, given the factors that the team has reviewed and presented to you today, the administration's recommendation is option one, two pre-K through fifth grade schools. And with that, we're happy to take any questions that you might have.
Dr. Green?
Thank you. First of all, I recognize that our goal is to reduce transitions with our students so we can be more in alignment with our peers throughout the city. However, there are special needs for our students in District Four, which is my district. So, my first question with regards to the two options presented is first, have you had an opportunity to talk with the building administrators? I don't recall there being any discussion or informational sessions in the community about these two options. Because I am hearing from some of my constituents, I am certainly not speaking for them all, but I do know there's more of a preference for the option-two model because of developmental reasons as well as, I think, the extra nurturing. And then, if I recall, when we did the first presentation at workshop, I do believe there was some discussion. I know we would have to redo attendant zones within the district as well. So, my ask is, how can we ensure that there is community input with regards to what the options are and the implications for both?
So, I can share with you that I have had conversations with all administrators of the whole of the tri-campus. We have met and discussed the options. If the direction is given by the board, we will schedule community meetings. Because you're right, we have not had meetings about these two options. We had meetings with Betty F. Williams when other things were being considered.
All right, thank you. And then the other ask, and I think Dr. Robertson, I asked this at the workshop, about once that decision is made, forming some type of committee to determine how we are going to preserve the name of Betty F. Williams, who was an educator. She was the first African-American, back then they said negro, school supervisor in Prince's Anne County. So, I do would like to see a committee formed that will honor how we are going to preserve her name as well in District Four.
Mr. Callen?
You indicate that the cost is neutral, but you also indicate that the cost is twenty-five million. So, I'm just assuming that whether it's option one or option two, the cost will be twenty-five million. Is that a correct assumption?
Correct. There's additional work to be done. You know, as, as Dr. Green mentioned, if one option is chosen, the option one, there's some rezoning to be done. So, we do that work with Building Utilization Committee. We could start that work next fall if a decision is made by the board before then. And if option two is chosen, the same amount of space would need to be added to the two schools. It's just that it's more evenly dispersed with option one at Diamond Springs and Newtown about, you know, fifty-fifty, where if option two is chosen, we would need greater classroom space at the second campus, the Newtown Elementary School campus for grades two through five. We would need to add space pretty much for the whole fifth grade.
But again, either option is going to incur a cost of twenty-five million.
Both options we're estimating right now would be under twenty-five million, and we're estimating a range between eighteen to twenty-two classrooms with both options. Just again, depending on which option we choose, you know, where that space would need to be added.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Culpepper?
Thank you. First, I would agree with my colleague that it seems perfectly fair to get some community input, which path forward is most reasonable for that community. And that sounds like something for the Building Use Committee to tackle. And I'll see you have your demography team back there, I assume, to answer questions, and I have one for Mr. Burklewell. I would presume, looking at this problem, that's a pretty fairly straightforward rezoning issue to take the current zone for Betty F. Williams and split it. So, I was just going to ask if you see it potentially being more complicated than that?
It shouldn't be any more complicated than the point of view of our experimental school rezoning that we went through. We just need input from the School Board as to what they want to do, and we'll start working on it.
Okay, that answer sounds like it could be more complicated than that. All right, thanks.
Ms. Melick?
I, I agree with my colleagues. I think this is a pretty bold move on our part not to involve the community. This is a huge shift for our community. It's been this way as long as I've been on the board, right? The setup that we have right now. And so, I don't know how we move forward without asking the people who will be affected the most by, by this, by this change. I've been hearing things too about pre-K through one, through first grade. So, yeah, I'm, I'm, I mean, I appreciate two options, but again, I'm going to say, as I've said before, even as a veteran of the classroom, I feel ill-equipped to make this decision based on two options by myself. So, and you're giving us two. I'd rather have you just say, this is the best for the community, but we didn't ask them. So, I ask that we do that. Thanks.
Ms. Rogers?
Okay, so, a couple of things, I guess. I definitely think that community input is necessary, but I, I also have the concerns on option two. One, one, I'll start, maybe Dr. Robertson instead of y'all, sorry. Did we not decide to move the students from Bayside Six over to the middle school because of transitions as part of it?
That was a factor, yes. There were other factors, but yes.
Yeah, so, I'm concerned about then fixing a problem and creating a new one that's the same problem we just fixed. That makes sense. We just fixed our transition issue by moving Bayside Six over to the middle school for next year. Will we then be creating another transition problem if we go to two schools that are primary? I don't know what you call it. The intermediate, I guess, is the, is the word?
Yeah, intermediate.
Intermediate, okay. So, I don't want to create the problem that we just fixed. That kind of seems counterintuitive to me. The other question that I would then have, and I don't know if it'd be for you, Dr. Robertson, or for y'all, is that when we had the Bayside Six campus and then there was staff, especially when it came to our electives, that we're having to run back and forth to two campuses, I don't want to create that problem again. Is that something that would be a factor if we have pre-K to two, three to five, or however you guys split it up? Would that be then a problem of having our staff running back and forth to two campuses?
I can't, I might defer to Dr. Calucci. At this point in time, there are no specials in the tri-campus that go between schools just because of the number of children that are served at the elementary level. It incorporates a full, it needs the need for a full-time music and art and P.E. teacher at each of the three campuses. Once we got direction about the two schools, it would be better, you know, I could better say, you know.
So, I'm saying, if we went with option two, would that then make our staff have to split themselves between two campuses is?
I don't think I'm prepared to answer that question. I apologize.
All right, no, that's totally fine. That's just my concern. So, those are my two big concerns is that, you know, we're creating problems by trying to solve them. But I do think that we do need to have community input on this as well. I'll agree with that.
Vice Chair Williams?
Yes, thank you. I believe, if my memory serves me well, that before we made the Bayside vote to move the sixth graders, the majority of us met over at Bayside Middle and had an input session, and we got some folks, in fact, some of them are here tonight, that actually spoke, I think, at that. And so, I definitely feel that we need to do that before we make a decision, to be consistent as we have done before. And I think it's necessary. So, my question is timeline. How quickly can we get the information out and then have set up some sort of date that we will meet, you know, somewhere to get input in person and via electronically? And, and what does that do with your timeline?
Yeah, we're okay. Well, I'll meet with the team and put, put a plan together. I would think that probably four to six weeks is enough for us to do that and come back to you with that information and, and item that you can then take action on.
Yes, it's obvious that we all, I think we all appear want that and need to do that. Thank you so much.
Ms. Tony Otter, we need, we need to pull that off action next week. Thank you.
Before I go back to Dr. Green, Ms. Lynetti, are we going to then have to do, and I have no problem with doing two community input sessions, one for, you know, the final decision and one for the decision about option one or two, but will we then have to do a second one after that decision?
That requires if you move more than ten percent of the population, you have to have one community meeting. So, I think you can do one meeting on either after you've made decision one or two or before you make your final decision where you're considering two options.
Okay, I was just curious about that. All right, so, we are going to move that and look to schedule a community input session. Dr. Green?
Thank you. And Dr. Robertson, as you and your team look at dates, because when we did the information session, I recall for the sixth-grade campus back in the fall, there were a lot of conflicting events that night in that community, and I really still have concern about people really not being able to voice their opinion for that transition. So, I implore you and, and your team to please look at calendars to make sure that there are no other events going on that evening. You know, given that we are still a ways away, this may mean it will not happen until sometime in maybe possibly May or sometime, you know, early summer. So, I do recognize that. And also, I ask that there be a lot of communication, communication that I can share as well with the community, as well as other community leaders. Because, you know, before, I just feel that maybe we could have done a better job with getting information out. And the other piece, you know, that I want to say as a former administrator, having worked with staffing, certainly, you know, right now, the community has to weigh in whether it's option one or option two. It would be, I think, helpful in terms of understanding the staffing piece, and I'm looking at how it is staffed now. I've been around so long, I was part of that campus when it opens, when it opened. And even from my calculations, there are always going to be certain positions you're going to have to share, okay, because of just, just the nature. We have itinerant staff now that say, go between, you know, John B. Dye and, and another site. So, for me, that should not be one of the deal breakers for this. Also, if we end up regardless of two standalone schools, they each, by my calculations, and I know there's some, you know, ticks to this, they should be able to accommodate a whole staff as they do now. Diamond Springs does now. So does Newtown Road Elementary, and so does Williams Elementary. You know, school psychologists, we're going to always share. School social workers, we're going to always share, and a few other of the support positions, we're going to always share. Behavior specialists, we're going to always share. But that nucleus of the school, they always stay put, such as our reading coaches, math... But that nucleus of the school, they always stay put, such as our reading coaches, math teachers. So that should not be a deal breaker with the staffing piece, and I don't see how that would be if we're right now have three and we're going to take it down to two. You can do the math. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any more questions at this time, so we are going to move on to the Building Utilization Committee Report to School Board. And it looks like we're going to welcome Jack Freeman and, excuse me if I butcher your name, Ronald Burkewile? I hope I got it right.
Yes, Ron Burkewile. So I just wanted, so the only reason up here is to just give context, particularly for our new school board members. So this is an annual process. Staff is required to brief the board at the second meeting in March, no later than. So we're at the end of the process that began in the September timeframe. There's a Building Utilization Committee that did all this work, and Mr. Burkewile is going to give you the brief of what happened for this year and then set up, sort of, sets up for next year.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. And if you forget how to pronounce that last name, it's real easy to remember because it rhymes with work-awhile. You just changed the W's. Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, School Board Members, and Superintendent Robertson, thank you for giving me some time to share some information with you. For all new school board members, I'd like to introduce myself. I am Ron Burkewile, the Virginia Beach Public Schools Demographer and GIS Manager. Tonight, as is customary, as Mr. Freeman said, and established by policy, I'll present to you the Building Utilization School Year 2425 committee information. During the data collection and review process, the office was pleased to work with the following committee members. During the process, the committee reviewed School Board Policy 5-14, which governs what we do, attendance zones, membership data, building utilization ratios, housing trends, and projections. The review was in accordance with BUC's purpose for analyzing enrollment projections, reviewing building utilization, and making recommendations. Based upon last, based upon last year's committee recommendations, point-of-view elementary school, which we just spoke about a little bit, a few moments ago, and Larksboro Middle School were rezoned, facility services developed a number of rezoning scenarios. To implement this, the committee chose the most efficient one. Facility services engaged in the public domain. The school board was briefed, and the rezoning was approved for school year 2526. The purpose for rezoning was to efficiently utilize school space and enhance student academic progress. This is the approved rezoning plan as, as we move forward to 2526. Using our GIS technology, we're able to map student density. The highest density areas are in Bayside, Green Run, and Salem. These are identifiable as dark navy blue areas on the map. With the exception of one area, density hasn't changed much. The exception can be found in the northwestern part of the city. The red circle is located in the Haygood area. Based upon Virginia Beach's September 30 enrollment data, the district had approximately 64,700 students. This slide compares the twenty, school year 2425 membership to school year 2324. The totals include grade K through 12, pre-kindergarten, early childhood special education, and the southeastern cooperative educational program. Overall, in 2425, membership declined a very modest four tenths of 1%. Programatically, there are 62,873 K through 12 students, 1,422 ECSC students and pre-K, and 361 CSEP students occupying school facilities. Over the long term, a modest waning membership trend can be observed. The trend positively correlates with the declining local birth rate trend. Moderating the membership decline, Plaza Elementary School was closed in school year 2009-10, and Full Day Kindergarten was instituted in school year 1617. Of note, beginning in school year 2021, the waning membership is smaller. This is an example. For a more recent perspective, this slide gives an illustration of past, of the past five years. The green columns represent actual September 30th membership enumerations. The orange caps atop the green columns represent support program membership, and the blue columns are projections. Barring any economic or viral health shocks, the modest waning trend should continue in the future. Another method for managing the waning membership is to eliminate portables. In school year 9798, when facilities were overcapacity, portables were distributed versus building new schools. As membership declined, portables were eliminated. Today, 317 portables have been eliminated. This is an equivalent to seven to eight elementary schools. In coming years, portable movements will occur, but these movements will have a neutral effect upon the aggregate number that we currently have. For school year 2425, there were 55 elementary schools. 51 schools were within the acceptable capacity range of negative 10% to positive 10%. On the map, out-of-range schools are shaded yellow. If needed, on pages 29 through 34 of your CIP book, all school capacity data is available to you. In the same school year, there are 14 middle schools. 12 of the middle schools were within the acceptable capacity range. There are 11 high schools, and eight are within range. For the upcoming five years, support education membership should modestly continue to grow. However, the growth will not be substantial enough to offset the K through 12 decline. Because local births continue to decline, this translates to smaller kindergarten classes. On the left side of the slide, in the orange box, kindergarten is forecast to hover between 4,300 and 4,400 students over the next five years. On the right side of the slide, the number of 12th graders graduating exceeds the number of new kindergarteners. This is the primary factor for the waning decline in membership. As shared last year, we continue to refine the forecasting model. Last year, we discovered socioeconomic effects upon migratory activity within the division and ca, and did have a, a significant effect upon membership. In addition, currently, with the 30-year mortgage interest rate hovering around 7%, family movements have declined, so this should help a little as well. Using the data, a migratory model was created and incorporated into, into the forecasting model. This year, I'm in the, and I am sample-testing several kindergarten models for forecasting membership, which is a challenge because of the declining rates at each elementary school. To summarize, the Building Utilization Committee has successfully fulfilled all Policy 514 requirements. The school board approved the school year 2526 rezoning plan. Membership continues to follow the modestly waning trend. Facility capacity is well-managed overall, and scientific modernization of the forecasting model continues to evolve. Be happy to answer any questions.
Ms. Rogers?
So, quick question. Are we talking about rezoning anywhere else? Only because I'm looking at our school capacity for high schools and noticing that, like, Ocean Lakes is under capacity, but like First Colonial has, they have the trailers, so like, are we planning on, I mean, could we adjust there?
Anything's possible. We go by the direction of the school board, and if that's what the school board brings to our Bu, Building Utilization Committee, Chair, Mr. Culpepper, will be happy to explore anything that you may have, that you may have in mind.
You can't run away, Mr. Culpepper.
Sorry, Mr. Culpepper.
I, I just didn't know if that's something that, you know, Building Utilization is going to be looking at, but I appreciate the information. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So I would, Mr. Culpepper is no longer on the buck, but he was the chair of that committee previously. So if anybody has any questions about how that process played out previously, I can ask Mr. Culpepper. I don't see any more questions at this time, so thank you very much for coming out and sharing this information with us.
You're welcome.
We will now move on to the Local Special Education Annual Plan Application Report for the Virginia Department of Education. This time, we welcome Dr. Ronnie Myers-Dobbs, Executive Director of Programs for Exceptional Children.
Hi, good evening. Good evening, Chairwoman Brown, Vice Chairwoman Weems, School Board Members, and Dr. Robertson. I'm Ronnie Myers-Dobbs, the Executive Director of the Programs for Exceptional Children, and I'm here this evening to provide information pertaining to the Division's Special Education Annual Plan, Part B flow-through application, and report, which is often referred to as the Annual Plan Application. Tonight's presentation is an annual requirement to inform you of how we intend to spend allocated federal funds based on the requirements outlined in the application. The Annual Plan Application also serves as a formal agreement between the local school board and the Virginia Department of Education for implementing federal and state laws and regulations governing special education programs. Local educational agencies are required to submit this application each year according to the federal provisions of the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act of 2004, as well as state regulations. Prior to the submission to the Virginia Department of Education, each school division must review its annual plan application with its local special education advisory committee, also known as SEAC, and submit it to the local school board for approval. SEAC member Megan Ashburn is here with us this evening and will provide the board with the committee's response to the Division's Annual Plan Application. This annual review is critical because the disbursement of federal funds appropriated for the education of children with disabilities is contingent upon the approval of the plan and its components. A portion of this application includes certification of adherence to a list of assurances delineated by Virginia Department of Education, which ensures the school division has developed policies and procedures for the provision of special education and related services, which are consistent with the policies and procedures that VDOE has established in accordance with IDEA and its federal implementing regulations. Assurances such as those listed on this slide are examples of actions required to maintain compliance with federal and state regulations. The terms "free appropriate public education" and "individualized education program" are often heard in the field of special education. These two comment, these two concepts are specific to each student qualifying for special education services. As each student's IEP is developed and reviewed by the IEP team, determination is made about supports and services needed to ensure access to the general curriculum and to the maximum extent appropriate, the student being educated with peers without disabilities in the least restrictive environment. In addition, the school division has policies and procedures designed to prevent over-identification or disproportionate representation by race and ethnicity of children with disabilities. In addition to the statement of assurances, the Annual Plan Application requires school divisions to submit information about select special education programs and expenditures. One required component is information about the Division's JAIL Education Program, or JEP. State regulations mandate that special education services be provided to incarcerated youth with disabilities who are in our jail, the Virginia Beach Correctional Center. Such services are delivered according to the students' IEPs by special education teachers. An inter-agency agreement is in place to address staffing and security issues. Maintenance of Effort, or MOE, is the requirement of each school division to spend at least the same amount of local or local plus state funds in the delivery of special education and related services as spent in the year the division last met the maintenance of effort. Two additional components are listed on this slide. Proportionate set-aside, or PSA, is the requirement for each local school division to set aside a specific federal dollar amount to be used for children with disabilities who are homeschooled or parentally placed in private schools within our jurisdiction. Each year, our division hosts the required collaborative consultation session with participating Virginia Beach private schools to determine how best to use the federal set-aside funds. Funds may be used for direct services, consultative services, equipment, or materials. Direct services will be used for, for the provision of speech and language services due to the strong linkage between speech and language skills and overall literacy. The Annual Plan Application also requires a recap of the Division's use of its federal funds for the prior fiscal year, as well as our anticipated expenditures for the upcoming fiscal year. The Division uses the federal funds for the intended purposes of the grant, including expenditures for personnel, materials and equipment, and professional development opportunities, with most of the funds used for personnel. So this slide breaks down our annual plan's projected budgets for 202526, Part B, Section 611 and 619 grant funds. VDOE has not yet released official allocations by locality for next year, and divisions are asked to prepare a budget based on level funding with the current year. Our recommended budget is summarized in this chart, and these funds represent less than 15% of the Division's special education funding. Part B, Section 611 flow-through, also known as Title VI Grant, will continue to support personnel and benefits and professional development. Part B, Section 619, Early Childhood Special Education, also known as the Preschool Incentive Grant, will also continue to support current personnel, benefits, material supplies, and professional development for early childhood special education teachers. And then indirect costs for both were calculated at the current rate of 2.27%. And full details are located on Pages 3, 13 through 16 of the Annual Plan Application. So as noted earlier, each school division must review its Special Education Annual Plan Part B flow-through application with SEAC prior to submission of it to the school board and subsequently VDOE. On February 28th, the Annual Plan was shared with SEAC's Policy Review Committee, and at the March 11th SEAC meeting, the policy subcommittee garnered SEAC support to move the Annual Plan Application forward after a brief presentation about it. So now I would like to take this opportunity to invite Mrs. Ashburn to the podium to provide board members with the committee's response to the proposed Annual Plan Application. Many of you are, know Ms. Ashburn, and I would like to also share that during the last legislative cycle, one of the requirements was that VDOE established regional representatives, and Ms. Ashburn is actually also our Region 2 representative for PTC. So she has a new added role this year.
This is the third time that I've heard this plan, so, yes, so thank y'all for hearing that, and thank you, Ronnie, for always being so collaborative. It's nice to see you, Mr. Mullinsdale. And yes, we'd like you to move forth with the plan officially.
All right, so thank you, Mrs. Ashburn. If the board members have any questions at this time about the information included in tonight's presentation, I'll be happy to respond to those.
Thank you. Ms. Malick?
So, let's, okay. PSA, Title VI Grants, Part B, Section 611 and 619 Grants, state or federal?
Federal.
Federal. So let's talk about the dissolution of the Department of Education. You specifically talked about the distribution of federal funds. What, what are the budgetary impacts if the Department of Education is no longer?
Well, I can share with you that we were in a meeting last week with Virginia Department of Education, Dr. Hollins, who's the Assistant Superintendent of Special Education, and she did share with us that they had just had a meeting with the Office of Special Education Programs, which is the office at the federal level, and that they were moving forward as they have always moved forward. They were not, nothing was shared that there would be any changes. There was also a press release on March 20th, you know, that commented that closing the department was not going to impact federal funding. that closing the department was not going to impact federal funding. So as far as I know, we are moving forward, and that's what we have been told over the last week.
Okay, so that's confusing to me, that you're talking about closing something because I think, well, first of all, special education is our number-one unfunded mandate. So we're, if it weren't for the state and the city and what they give us, I don't know how we would fund. I think our federal fund's about $75 million. And that's my concern. If something does happen and we lose that funding, we're looking at, I thought about 75, the impact was about $75 million to the Division.
Yes, specifically for special education, it's about $16 million.
Correct. Okay, all right. And what are our special ed numbers this year? I see in Mr. Burkabyle's presentation, he had, it looked reminiscent of a Mr. Freeman. It's like Mr. Freeman graph. But the little orange caps at the top, I noticed, are getting a little bigger.
Yes. Our official December 1 count for 2024 was 9,023.
9,023, okay.
So it's up from last year, which was 8,887.
Okay, all right.
So we've seen that small incremental increase over the last few years.
Every year, okay, all right.
Thank you.
Vice Chair Weems?
Yes, thank you. I kind of had some comments very similar, so I won't repeat those. But with the amount, I know at one time, I think the federal funding was supposed to be, what percentage?
Well, Congress promised to fund at 40%.
Forty, okay, I was gonna say 41% for some reason, I remembered. And then it's actually what, seven, it's never been over like 16 or 17%.
Right, I think it averages about 14%, and they said the highest it's been is like 18% when we had those stimulus funds several, many years ago.
All right, okay, well, that's interesting. But anyway, I just wanted to give kudos to you, Megan. You're doing a great job. I'm so bummed out that Mr. Bowensdale stole this committee from me. I'm just kidding. I know working full-time really gets in the way of me going to y'all's committee meetings, but I'm hearing great things about how great CAC is running, and you're doing a great job in that leadership, and congratulations to your new role. Thank you so much for all you do.
Thank you. Seeing no more questions, we will now move on to the rising cost of student activities, and we will welcome LeAnn Turnbull, Director of Student Leadership.
Thank you. Good evening Chairwoman Brown, Vice Chairwoman Weems, members of the School Board, and Dr. Robertson. I am LeAnn Turnbull, Director of the Office of Student Leadership. I am joined by members of the Student Activities Office, Coordinators John Cosamanu and David Rhodes. We understand the School Board is not currently in support of implementing structured fee options as a way to increase revenue. Therefore, we have removed this from our proposal. Today's presentation will include three proposals for the School Board's consideration and vote. We are proposing an increase to our coaches' salaries to include pay for postseason play. To help offset the cost of the coaching salary increase, we are proposing an increase to our ticket and pass price. Lastly, we would like to propose expanding our ticket sales to athletics and activities where we previously have not charged. To help offset the rising costs of our Virginia High School League and Virginia Beach Middle School League athletic programs and activities, we are looking at increasing ticket prices and expanding ticket sales over the next two years. Additionally, we are exploring other avenues for future revenue options. We previously shared one option to help generate additional revenue is to increase ticket prices for athletic events and activities of both the middle school and high school. Ticket and pass price adjustments can generate approximately $369,000 of additional revenue to help offset operational expenses, including coaching salaries, equipment upgrades, and security costs. Coaches and sponsors play a vital role in developing student athletes by fostering leadership, teamwork, and discipline. This is why we are asking for your consideration and approval to increase the supplement of our Virginia High School League and Virginia Beach Middle School League coaches and sponsors by 10% and to pay an additional stipend for postseason play to begin in the 2025-26 school year. The total amount needed to provide this increase is approximately $300,000. An investment in our coaches is an investment in our students. Strategic ticketing adjustments allow us to generate additional revenue to help balance increasing costs for police officials and supports and increase for our coaches. Administration is seeking your approval to increase ticket prices. Doing so will help bring an additional projected revenue of over $369,000. As previously reviewed, this slide shows the proposed increases to ticket prices at each level and the 10% increase to pass prices. We also reviewed family ticket options, as the School Board suggested, in order to keep events affordable and accessible with this increase. Our family pass options allow families to access regular season high school events held in Virginia Beach, both home and away, all year long, and is a great value for families to consider. Here's an example of how the family passes work. A family of five wants to attend all 10 games during the regular high school football season. The family consists of two adults and three school-age students. If they bought individual tickets for all 10 games, they would pay $350, and they would only be permitted to attend those 10 football games. In the family pass, in the family, if they, if they, if the family purchased a family pass for five, they can save up to $50, and each family member would have a pass to access all home and away game, regular season games in Virginia Beach the entire year. These passes, as you can see, are tailored to fit families of all sizes and maximizes access to events. The School Board inquired about the Virginia High School League and Virginia Beach Middle School League events, for which we do not charge, and requested we explore and consider expanding sales to these activities. We have estimated an approximate revenue close to $50,000. Administration is seeking your approval to expand ticket sales and to support additional revenue. The expansion of ticket sales to athletics and activities not previously charged is believed to generate an estimated $50,000 based on the projected number of people attending each event at the $10 rate. One factor that must be considered when charging for entrance to athletic events is the accessibility of the entrance and playing area at each school. Some of our schools and facilities have perimeters and boundaries that are not conducive to charging, such as golf, tennis, and cross-country. It is important to note with the expansion of ticket sales, we must also increase staffing needed to support the implementation. Finding staff willing to work events is an ongoing challenge for our student activities coordinators. Doing a phased ticket sale expansion allows us time to monitor any additional implications and support needed. In review of our Virginia High School League and Virginia Beach Middle School League activities, we are proposing the following phased approach to ticket sale expansion. Starting with the 25-26 school year, we will be ready to begin charging for the following at high school: field hockey, swim and dive, indoor and outdoor track, and JV soccer. For middle school, we will be ready to begin charging for track, soccer, Scholastic Bowl playoffs, one-act play festivals, festivals, and debate playoffs. Again, we estimate an additional revenue of $50,000 based on expanding ticket sales to these events. Due to additional challenges and structural changes needed for baseball and softball, ticket sales would not begin until 26-27 school year. We have assessed the structural and perimeter changes needed around the entrances and playing areas for baseball and softball at each high school. These changes will come with additional costs and support from other departments in the Division, and as a result, we will need more time before we can implement. The cost of student activities will continue to rise over the years, and we must take a proactive approach by exploring additional revenue options to help offset these costs. Some of these considerations include reviewing facility use frequency and application fees, exploring ticket sale platforms who may have discounted fees and offer more options and flexibility for sales, and exploring security options at events, such as security companies who may offer more flexible rates and options for coverage at activities and non-athletic events. In this presentation, I have shared three proposals for your vote in hope of approval. One, an increase to our coaches' salary and to include pay for postseason play. We are proposing an increase to our ticket and pass prices. And lastly, we would like to propose expanding our ticket sales for Virginia High School League and Virginia Beach Middle School League athletics and activities where we have previously not charged. I am joined today by members of the Student Activities Office, and we welcome any questions.
Thank you. Ms. Malnick?
So not a question, but I do want to say, I spent 26 straight years following my kids to activities, paying for activities, paying for the equipment, paying to get them there. Then when you get there, you pay to get in, even though you paid to play, and then you pay to get in to watch your kid, so you're basically paying for it all. My point in all of that is, I hope the community understands that small increase in ticket prices because what I don't want is to lose any of this. I want our students to have the best opportunities that they can, whether it's fine arts, you know, to sports, that we still offer as much as we possibly can for our students. And so I do support this increase. I love the fact that you are creative with family, with family ticket blocks. I really appreciate that. And, but thank you for the effort that you put into this, and for the coaches' stipends. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Ms. Malnick.
Ms. Rogers?
Thank you. On Ms. Turnbull, on the increased ticket prices, where it shows the the family pass options, then, is it different, pass options for the middle school? Because their ticket prices are different. I wasn't sure if this is across the board or if we had different prices for middle school.
Great question, Ms. Rogers. I'm gonna invite Mr. Cosamanu to address that question.
Currently, we don't have family pass packages for the middle school based on their current ticket prices, and we hadn't created those up to this point for middle schools, even with the new price increases, especially taking into consideration the concern many people had around the number of children that people would be bringing, and the child price still being, student-age child price only increasing $1 to $3 total. So it's something we could investigate, but up to this point, there's not been passes at the middle school level.
Okay, that, I guess that was my question, simply because I only saw the family pass options for one entity. And I guess my comment then would be that with middle schoolers, a lot of times when you have middle schoolers, there's a lot younger children. I mean, I have a middle schooler, but my kids are older. But in any event, I just want to make sure that, you know, everyone can see their kids. So that was it. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Rogers.
Mr. Cummings?
Thank you so much for sharing. I think you touched on something I was very curious about, which is staffing all these new ticketed events. Does the revenue of $50,000, does that include the labor that we're anticipating with staffing?
It does not. It only includes an approximation of 25 guests participating in each of those events. That's what we use as our baseline to come up with 50,000.
Yeah, I'm kind of, I mean, I'm just kind of curious how this ends up with, you know, when we put labor inside of it, if, what that revenue is actually gonna look like after we put people, staffing, you know, the cost of scheduling, all those different pieces. That was just the first thing that came to my head, and I think you touched upon it. So I was just kind of curious if you could maybe unpack that a little more, what that would maybe look like. And then I see with family passes for like five, six, seven people, I think something for offsetting cost considerations, I would love for us to look at something like a firm or something like, similar to that, where we can utilize monthly payments for folks who might not necessarily have, you know, 360 or 400 bucks just to chuck down at one certain time. So that'd just be in some direction I think I'd appreciate. I don't know if it's the right answer or not, but I would love some exploration down that avenue.
Thank you, Mr. Cummings.
Dr. Green?
Thank you. Ms. Turnbull, I had an opportunity to look at other school division stipends. So it looks like we're kind of at the lesser end in a lot of instances with some of our sports and club sponsorships. Is that, did I read that correctly, or my own research, not your research?
That is correct. But we could speak to that if you'd like more information.
No, no, I'm good. But my point, and this is more so for the viewing public so that they can understand why it is important that we do give an increase to our club sponsors and coaches. And so people automatically just hear "coaches," but club sponsors under the Virginia High School League as well, and other club sponsors, your newspaper, well, we don't do, do we still do newspaper in this electronic time? No. Yearbooks, yes. Forensics, debate teams, theater, all of those type of activities that are under the Virginia High School League, ones maybe not theater. But we have a hard time getting coaches, one. And then also, too, with our coaches and club sponsors, they spend a lot of time prepping our kids. Like this evening, you saw all the great athletes and honors that our students receive. And that's because of good coaching and outstanding club sponsorships. So it is important that we are able to continue to keep a high-quality staff that work with our students in their co-curricular activities. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Green.
Mr. Bowensdale?
Well, thank you for the presentation, and I also wanted to say that I agree with Mr. Cummings. I was gonna reach out on that point, as far as coming up a little way to everybody could afford to get the family pass or a B. But the concern I have is the middle school raising the rates from $3 to $8. I mean, you've more than doubled it. That seems like a little high.
That was the recommended, that was the recommended increase, yes.
No, I'm just, my concern is that if we make it too high, we just push people from showing up, which is not good. But I mean, it just seems like that's a big jump, especially for middle school, $5. But that's just my concern.
Thank you, Mr. Bowensdale.
Okay, thank you. I, oh, Dr. Robertson has something to say.
Yeah, so I appreciate the feedback from the board tonight, just a little direction. So we'll be back to the board on a student fee vote in about four weeks. So right now, this is to come back in two weeks for you to vote on this proposal we've provided to you tonight. My contention would be, you brought forward some good things that we need to take a closer look at, like the family pass piece, whether or not $8 is the appropriate amount. Full disclosure, Mr. Bowensdale, that was me who said $8. So that was not Student Activities Office. So certainly, it is a huge jump from $3 to $8. We could certainly adjust that to $6, all right? Because we are arbitrarily trying to figure out what's the right number without having a negative impact. So we'll adjust that down to $6. A lot of the information we're trying to provide you are projections. Were, what I was using was conversations with other Region 2 superintendents who are also gonna raise ticket prices, and some of the conversations they've had. So I think what I can promise you is, we'll provide an update to the board after the fall season next year to show you a comparison to the revenue that we received next year versus this year as a projection. So if the board is okay with staying with the schedule we have, which is to come back in two weeks and vote, we'll make an adjustment on the middle school down to 6. And I don't know if two weeks is gonna be enough time to look at whether we can do middle school family passes, but we will look at middle school family passes, and we have to make that adjustment. We can do that before the fee structure comes out in about six weeks.
We can have that ready.
Thank you. Mr. Cummings?
I think my quick final thought is I would like us to consider some type of family fee for folks who qualify for free or reduced lunch for those families. And maybe just consider that, and just a quick point of information that these will be three separate things that we are voting on, and not like one package? Okay, thank you.
So that actually was what I was about to say is, I see on the, from Agenda Planning, this was listed as one, but I do think that these are three very distinctive, separate issues. So I think that this is a good compromise from the pay-to-play or student activity fee for every student. So I appreciate- So, I appreciate you guys coming back with something that this, this board could hopefully get behind. And, you know, I, I will say athletics are going up. When I was younger, I used to compete. My family could come and watch these competitions that I would compete at for free for figure skating, and now families are paying to go watch their kids compete at the same exact competitions, you know, fifteen years later at different ranks. So, well, not fifteen years. I'm trying to, I'm trying to make myself just a little younger here. So, all right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Brown.
We will now have an update on the Carl D. Perkins Grant, and we welcome Dr. Sarah Lockett, Director of Technical and Career Education.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairwoman Brown, Vice Chairwoman Williams, members of the board, and Dr. Robertson. I am Dr. Sarah Lockett, Director of Technical and Career Education, and as a requirement of the Federal Carl D. Perkins Five Grant, we are here tonight to present for the board's information the proposed local plan for budgeting grant expenditures for next school year. The Federal Strengthening Career and Technical Education for the Twenty-First Century Act authorizes funding to local school divisions associated with the Perkins Five grant funding and reflects our nation's more than one-hundred-year federal commitment to career and technical education programs. The funded, funding allocated to localities is critical to ensuring that our programs are prepared to meet the ever-changing needs of learners and employers in our city and across the Commonwealth. To remain in compliance with the Act, Virginia Beach City Public Schools must approve and submit a Perkins Five Local Plan and Budget for Career and Technical Education annually based on requirements authorized by the Standards of Quality and Perkins Five. The school division must submit this year's application no later than April thirtieth, Tonight's presentation supports the continuing, supports continuing Perkins Five grant funding for programs providing over thirty-three thousand seats in sixteen-hundred-and-seventy-one career and technical course sections for secondary students offered to students face-to-face, online, and through dual enrollment. I'm sorry. Click just ahead just a little bit, and I'm going to catch up. Our CTE staff continues to work closely with teachers, students, parents, industry, and Virginia Beach Economic Development, the Hampton Roads Workforce Council, local government, and our General Advisory Council to ensure that input is reflected in the budget and plan represented to you this even, presented to you this evening. In addition to the local plan, Perkins Five requires localities to connect, conduct a local needs assessment to evaluate program structure and implementation that support student performance. The impact of the spending outlined in this year's plan will measure, will be measured by federally identified performance measures that look at CTE program completers, and this data is collected from the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. These measures include our four-year graduation rate, academic proficiency in English reading, mathematics, and science, post-program placement, non-traditional program concentration, program quality measured by attaining a recognized post-secondary industry credential, program quality measured by participation in work-based learning, and program quality measured by technical skill attainment. And I think I've caught up on the slide now. I'm pleased to report that students completing a CTE program in Virginia Beach blew many of these measures away, notably in the areas of program quality where data from all CTE program completers brought Virginia Beach in more than thirty-three percentage points above the state benchmark. And that circled in right up on your screen. Another win is in the area of work-based learning for CTE completers. The benchmark from the Department of Education is eleven percent, and seventy-two percent of Virginia Beach CTE completers had a work-based learning experience in the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. While you can see on the slide that our students outperformed the VDOE benchmark in almost every measure, there are two areas where we will focus improvement efforts. The first is two S three, academic proficiency in science for special populations. This mismeasure looked at CTE completers who were members of a special population that took any science SOL in the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Students in this measure included students with disabilities, English language learners, students living in poverty, homeless students, those living in foster care, and students with active-duty military parents. CTE program completers facing these barriers passed end-of-course science SOL tests just over one percentage point below the state benchmark. Members of the secondary D-Toll team are carefully watching and supporting science instruction as part of our overall support and anticipate this anomaly to be corrected. The second missed benchmark is for standard four S one, non-traditional program concentration. Non-traditional status is defined as one gender making up less than twenty-five percent of the workforce in the career area tied to a particular course. For example, this may include female students enrolled in welding or engineering, or welding stu-, or male students enrolled in dental assisting. The course is designated as part of a non-traditional program change over time as trends shift in the workforce. While Virginia Beach met this benchmark last year, we have missed it in the past. The CTE team and school counselors remain vigilant in recruiting, and we will continue our efforts to encourage non-traditional program enrollment. These efforts include the ATC STEM Spa Day for Women, Women for the Win Event for High School and Middle School, Beach Girls Rock, and the STEM Trifecta. This slide summarizes our local plan for spending estimated grant funds for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. The Virginia Department of Education has not yet released official funding allocations by locality for next year, and divisions are asked to prepare a budget based on level funding with the current year. Our plan is based on an estimated one million, one hundred and ninety thousand, five hundred and thirty dollars and fifty-seven cents. On the next few slides, we'll take a closer look at the budget by category. As stipulated in, in the Perkins Five legislation, up to five percent of funds may be used for costs to administer the grant. This portion of available funding is split between indirect costs and test proctors. The indirect cost rate is calculated with a formula that equates to just over two percent of the entire grant, and these funds go to the Office of Business Services. The budget for this item is lower than the allowable percentage at just seventeen thousand, seven hundred and sixty-one dollars to account for spending that is categorically exempt from the indirect cost calculation. The exempted funding is shifted to the second-line item to fund part-time test proctors who deliver exams to students seeking industry credentials each year. The total allocated to pay for test proctors is forty-one thousand, four hundred and twenty dol-, twenty-one dollars. Perkins Five legislation also requires that localities use federal funds to support professional development for CTE teachers. The proposed budget includes a hundred and seven thousand dollars for professional development activities for teachers and others involved with career and technical education programming. Professional development efforts for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year will include the opportunity for every CTE teacher to attend the Virginia Professional Conference for their subject area, as well as continuing to fund teacher travel to participate in national CTE conferences. While not required, Perkins Five permits the use of grant funds to support leadership development for students who face barriers as members of special populations. This line refers to our support of co-curricular student organizations such as DECA, Educators Rising, FBLA Skills USA, and TSA. Career and technical student organizations are an integral part of each career and technical education program. We continue to experience a surge in student participation in leadership contests sponsored by our CTSO clubs. In addition to robust participation for high school students, we are seeing middle school students competing at the state and national level in FBLA and TSA. The proposed budget for school year twenty-five, twenty-six includes a hundred and five thousand dollars to support travels for students identified as a member of special populations to compete in these events. Virginia Beach Schools allocates the bulk of our federal Perkins Five grant funding to required spending for equipment, software, and library sources that allow our CTE students to prepare for diverse careers and pathways. Just over six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars is budgeted for equipment and instructional materials at our secondary schools and specialty centers. These items include technology, software, machinery, and instructional resources. Equipment to improve our CTE programs is also supported by non-Perkins sources, like funding from the Virginia Department of Education and industry contributions, as well as local funds. The next line represents a portion of the industry certification exam given to students enrolled in high school CTE courses. The budget includes a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for industry credential test vouchers. Overall exam vouchers are supported with a mix of federal, state, and local monies. The proposed budget also continues to support STEM initiatives and efforts to recruit girls into STEM fields. Twelve thousand dollars is allocated for these efforts and will directly support the non-traditional gender benchmark we noted earlier in this presentation. The last two items on the Perkins Five grant budget are related to addressing our staffing challenges. Instructional positions in CTE classrooms remain a critical shortage area. A hundred and twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and ninety-seven dollars and fifty cents is budgeted for hiring incentives for new CTE teachers and the associated FICA taxes. The budget estimate is based on the actual amount expended in this current school year and anticipated hiring for next year. Incentives help us recruit and retain talented CTE teachers. Incentives are paid in two installments at the end of each semester in the year that the qualified CTE teacher is hired. The final line of the proposed budget represents support for highly-qualified technical skill attainment. Approximately thirty-eight thousand dollars is allocated to employ a part-time STEM tutor to support students and faculty with skill development and focus, and is focused on mastering the use of modern industrial tools like laser engravers, three-D printers, hydraulics, and CNC routers, as well as the software and math skills required to work these tools. Positions funded by Perkins Five are eligible for the grant for just three years, after which they must be retired to transition to local funds. This position is a part-time temporary position and will be in its second year in the fall of 2025. The position is important to our work to support accountability standards and to prepare students for the modern workforce. Members of the General Advisory Council for Career and Technical Education were involved in the creation of this plan and the budget. The GAC did a final review and approved the local budget application at their meeting earlier today. Thank you for your consideration, and this time, I'm happy to entertain any questions you may have.
Okay, I don't see any questions, but I appreciate everything you do. It's always excellent to get a workforce development presentation from you. We're doing really great things in our division, and you always continue to find new ways to move forward, so I appreciate that.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. We are now on to the Consent Agenda. Included on the Consent Agenda are Policy Three Thirty, Purchasing and Procurement of Goods and Services, Policy Three Seventy Four, New Construction Additions Alterations Naming of Schools or Parts Thereof Commemorated Displays. Are there any objections to the school board voting on the Consent Agenda as presented? Seeing none, I call for a motion to approve the Consent Agenda as presented, moved by Mr. Callen, seconded by Mr. Culpepper, and I now call for a vote to approve the Consent Agenda.
So, Madam Chair, we have ten ayes. The motion did pass for the approval of the Consent Agenda.
Thank you. We are now on to Personnel Report Administrative Appointments. I call for a motion to approve the Personnel Report and Administrative Appointments for March twenty-fifth, 2025, moved by Ms. Rogers, seconded by Ms. Dwyer. Any discussion? Seeing none, I call for a vote to approve the March twenty-fifth Personnel Report Administrative Appointments.
Ms. Dwyer, how do you vote?
Thank you. Madam Chair, we have ten ayes, and the motion did pass for the approval of the March twenty-fifth Personnel Report.
Thank you. We are now on to Policy Six Dash Six Two, Computer Systems. I call for a motion to approve Policy Six Dash Six Two, Computer Systems as presented, moved by Ms. Dwyer, seconded by Mr. Callen. Any discussion? Seeing none, I call for a vote on Policy Six Dash Six Two as presented.
So, Madam Chair, we have ten ayes. The motion did pass for Policy Six Dash Six Two, Computer Systems.
Thank you. We are now on Budget Transfers. I call for a motion to approve Budget Transfers as presented, moved by Ms. Rogers, seconded by Ms. Dwyer. Any discussion? Seeing none, I call for a vote on the Budget Transfers as presented.
Madam Chair, we have ten ayes. The motion did pass for the Budget Transfers.
Thank you. And we are now on Committee Organization and Board Reports. Do any members have anything to present? And Dr. Green?
Thank you. Quickly, three things. First of all, I had an opportunity to attend the Asses Foundation's quarterly meeting this pa-, last Tuesday, and I had an opportunity to meet the new CEO who will be taking over from Bonnie Sutton, who's retiring on June thirtieth, Mr. Damian Jigetz, who will be the new CEO for the Asses Foundation. Also, coming up in April, and more information will be shared, and Dr. Robertson, you may already know about the big Signing Day event on, in April as well, and additional information will be shared about that. Last Thursday, Mr. Bowenstill and I had an opportunity to participate in the student, the Superintendent Student Roundtable Council, and I guess we learned a lot, didn't we, from the students? Which was great. And then, the last announcement, Madam Chair, is that the Legislative Committee meeting that was scheduled for April seventh has now been changed to April eleventh at eleven a.m. So, we'll make sure we continue to publish that change. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Mel?
So, tomorrow is the Governor's School and CSEP Regional Board Meeting. Dr. Roberts and I will both be there, and I should report to the board that at the last meeting, I was elected as Vice Chair of both organizational, regional, both organizations' boards, so I love, I love serving on, on those two committees. I also wanted to give a shout-out to Salem Middle School, specifically Mr. Louis Jackson for a program that he has put together over there. At first, I thought I was going to come and speak to the civics classes about, I mean, to a class, but this young third-year teacher put together an after-school civics-on-the-move program, and there were about twenty-two kids there that stayed after school from the time the bell rang until five forty-five. And we put together, he and I worked together the week before to put together activities for the kids. They had studied local government, they also studied budgets, and so we came up with different questions for them, and we made it a game about how much the school board spends on given items, and they were shocked, of course. But it was a lot of fun. This is going to be a monthly activity for Mr. Jackson and those eighth-grade students, and I couldn't be more proud. So, kudos to Salem Elementary, thanks to Mrs. Fredrickson, and just a fine example of a really great teacher doing great things, and I hope, I hope he stays in this profession.
Mr. Callen?
I had two opportunities. One was on the nineteenth of March to work with the Harida WHRO Committee, and they gave us a special presentation on the degree of workforce development.
WHRO Committee, uh, and they gave us a special presentation on the degree of workforce development taking place in the community, and it is stunningly robust, with lots and lots of opportunities available for our students, and I'm sure that they're interacting, uh, with our organization as well. But, it was insightful, it was informative, and it was fascinating. Uh, secondly, I had an opportunity just yesterday to, uh, meet with the, uh, Gifted Community Group. Uh, we had a school visit at Landstown Middle School, and we got a chance to interact with some of the, uh, students, a, as well as the, uh, representatives from the administration that were, uh, giving us an idea of what's going on. So, uh, those are two door openers and eye openers all at the same time. So, it was an opportunity to, again, continue to see the footprint that's being, uh, placed in the school, uh, system, as well as within the community. Thank you.
Vice Chair Williams?
Um, yes, thank you. Um, Dr. Green and I attended the Jericho Road Committee meeting last week, and we unanimously voted on a recommendation, but you're gonna have to wait till April eighth to get that. Um, but that committee did a lot of good work, and I, I, I think that we'll all be very pleased. And so, we're gonna do a, kind of a brief overview, um, on the eighth, and then we'll dig deeper into it and give a more detailed presentation at a later date. Also, PRC, um, met, and, and you'll have about fifteen policies to look over next, on April eighth as well. And, um, lastly, the Attorney General is doing a documentary on opioids, and they want to feature Harbor Hope Center, so they're gonna be coming down here in the next couple of weeks and looking at, looking at what we've done there. So, thank you.
Ms. Rogers?
Um, so, Matt, Mr. Cummings and I had the opportunity at Sister Cities to, um, see the student presentations. There were about eight students that did presentations from different countries, and they, um, awarded scholarships. And then, last week, I went to the scholarship award. There were several artists, um, lots of celebration, and congratulations for our students. We have a new student ambassador from First Colonial. I'm sure you will see him around. And, um, then, the other thing is, um, I know that the musical at Callan High School starts this week. If anybody wants to go see it, it should be amazing.
Please let, let, well, tell them, let us know. We can get your ticket, and it's Shrek.
Yes, the musical is Shrek.
Okay. Mr. Bowenstill?
Um, yes, I just wanna add that I had the privilege of attending the superintendent's roundtable with Dr. Green. Uh, lot of, lot of good discussion. We talked about safety, the possibility of teachers having guns in schools. Uh, we got a lot of pushback when we mentioned something about pay-to-play. I didn't think I was gonna get out of there alive. They, they all came hard, just like, no way. We're not doing it. And, and half of them didn't even play sports. They were just like, no, you can't do it. But, anyway, it was a great time. Uh, also got to go to a pep rally at Cook on Friday, which was really cool, and got sorted. Got the opportunity to, to see some, uh, First Colonial softball game. Um, today, I was at Providence, and there's a rumor going around that in May, I'm probably gonna have syrup poured all over me and syrup, and cereal thrown at me. It's just a rumor. I'll keep you posted. And, and I hope I didn't lose my school visits with Dr. Robertson. I would've held my mouth shut if I'd known it was you. Thank you.
All right. Well, it sounds like the board is very much so underway with visits to schools and committees, and so I thank you guys for all of your work, and we are adjourned now at eight twelve p.m.